This meeting is being recorded.
We'll open the meeting at 6:03? Do we have any public comments, sign in?
Um, we did just one, Brian.
I am. Go ahead, Brian.
I have tumble hammering.
That's okay, I'm sorry, I talk to quietly.
We just wanted to make the comment because I've heard so many negative things about the situation of the fire truck. And a lot of them were true, most of them proved to be true. Bottom line is, the damn thing wouldn't fit. So, I would like to thank the Sleckman, and Elena, and Marty, and anyone else involved that brought that to light, to thank you, this whole town always would have a thank you. Because we say three hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate that.
And, thank you Terry, for being willing to work with us and find a truck that, that actually works, because...
Yeah, Chuckie Hunt. And, and I'll say, Brian, my son raises her, he's gonna be on board with us, because he's working trucks in Dover.
Good.
He's gonna make sure it's clear that we put a truck in here that will fit, and a truck that will benefit us, to put fires out in Dover calls.
Absolutely.
Be safe.
Ain't it right with that? So, thank you for being willing to work with us on that. Yep.
Excellent. Um, okay, um, on to the town manager reports. Elena, I, I am guessing that a lot of your report may be already covered in what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, pretty much everything I have for tonight is all the agenda.
Okay. Um, the only question, oh, did you want to add anything?
Nope.
Okay. The only question I had was in the year-to-date budget, I'm just looking that over, are there any items standing out to you that we should note? I mean, it, it was great, I saw the percentages, to think that was helpful.
Um, I mean, the only one that really sticks out to me is that we kind of really already knew was the Public Works because of, like, the Elliottsville Road washing it out and, and all of that. And, um, I did just move 10,000 of that out of the budget, so that helped some. Uh, it took it from reserve, because you guys had voted on that previously, it just never hit the budget that way. But I, other than that, that was pretty much the only thing.
Okay. I, I know the, um, the attorney fees, but again, I know some of the, the lines are a little, um, different, and it looked like it was did we, we didn't budget anything?
It's, we did.
Yeah.
It's just further down. So, it's, it's under contractual instead of, I don't know where, what, if personnel or yeah, yeah, so instead of admin, it's, it's contractual, so that's...
I knew there was something different about that minutes.
Yeah. Someday, we'll be able to delete the lines, but you can't use them for three years before you delete them. So, it's like a whole thing, and I need to figure out, but I also need to...
Every time we screw up and put it in the wrong line, that's losing it.
Couple of years, but that's okay, well, and I also have to have time to sit down and find, to comb the chart of there, there's a lot out there that, like, having more than one way to pay the truck payments, because there's a, a load in the Public Works line, and then there's a load in the debt service, and then sometimes Marty pays it out of Public Works, and sometimes she pays it out of debt service. They both make sense, it's just technically the debt service one is the one we're supposed to use.
Thank you for that explanation.
Of course.
Select Board reports, um, Jonathan?
Well, I don't have anything, I mean, we're gonna talk about so much tonight, but get right up.
One thing, I have noticed, uh, some issues up to the gymnasium. I mean, one, more and more siding is starting to come off, so that has to be addressed, but also there's multiple spots on that roof that peel off. So, that needs to get addressed, because you get a bit of wind under that rubber roof. Half the roof will over fall. I believe the roof systems are made.
Always done work on that.
Right, I can look into that.
Committee reports?
Beautification. Beautification. We had cleanup day, eight people helped pick up trash from town, and main party staff, the so good trailer at the dump, a lot of people dropped stuff off, helped pick stuff up, and seemed to be quite profitable. So, we need to figure out a way to keep that going. Working on, right Marty?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. We have an ongoing fall, fall sale, there are order forms, I'm gonna counter in the office. So, order now, pay now, and it'll be delivered late summer, early fall, for beautification next spring in everybody's yards. And finally, we have the fourth, I think it is, annual open sale scheduled for May 26th, across the way next to the Lake Shore House. I'm not sure we've decided on the time yet. 10 to 2? Mid-dead.
Yeah, I don't have the time.
Specific time to be determined that the beautification will be meeting next week.
Perfect.
What I have for that. I have some information from the collaborative.
Sure.
Okay. Next one is scheduled for next Saturday, in the gym, with people able to request grant funds of up to $3,000, voting to be done with attendees, and if you bring a ticket for the potluck, you get two votes. It's not really a vote, we get or is that what? And we're looking at doing May craft weekend again in early October, but there is some nobody wants to pay the $750 for being included in the official craft weekend guide, so we're looking at alternative ways.
Each business would have to pay that?
No, the collaborative would have to pay that, but it's up from 500 last year. We didn't seem to get a lot of people stopping in, didn't seem like a good expenditure, so. And that's all I wrote down.
Thank you. We got, I'm sure, the collaborative in our, our community reports. Um, I was gonna go alphabetically, not forget cemetery, but collaborative came.
Sorry, I didn't like one.
Any cemetery?
Lot Marcus, and we're looking at putting together a, a gravestone cleaning kit to sell at the town office. Some people come, there's a special spray you use, a little brush, and, you know, so we're gonna make those available. Jay is working on it, so that we can sell those to people who wanna go out and clean their own gravestone. They'll be a lot more successful than us trying to do all of them.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
What will the cost be for the graveyard?
Probably about 15 bucks, our little kit.
What'll be done?
This, this spray that we use is called D2, we've, they've used it up to the cemetery, or inside the church. It isn't anything that you spray in that just cleans it up, it takes several weeks for it to take effect. Kills the bacteria, it takes a while, but does an excellent job.
Recreation. Not seeing anyone here from recreation. I'm sorry. So, let's dive into old business, uh, first up is the EV charger.
Okay, um, so I don't know if I said the last time or not, but I've submitted all the paperwork and everything for reimbursement. The only thing that we were waiting on were the sides to be put up, so I had sent the pictures of the sides, but they need them to actually be on the post installed, and we just haven't had a chance to get that yet. Uh, but I told her that I would be emailing your pictures very shortly, and she said as soon as she gets that, we'll have the reimbursement. And then after the reimbursement from Efficiency Babe, we'll get the reimbursement from the Nature Conservancy, so.
Oh, okay, so that would be cover the total with?
Well, that we were allotted anyways, uh, which I think the total was like 18,000 of what we were allotted, and, uh, some of the work actually came back lower than what was anticipated by like $2,000, so that's good news too. Um, so I don't know if they'll change what we're actually getting based off the actual purchases, the actual number, but, um, I'll know that for sure when it happens.
And there's no deadline in getting the, the signs up and for the reimbursement?
No, no, she, yeah, she knows.
Well, the sign indicated clearly that it's parking only for vehicles being charged. Or these different kinds of signs. I asked, because yesterday there were two vehicles parked up there.
It says EV charging, parking only, and it has two arrows that point like this to those two, and then we have another sign that goes for the road that says EV charger this way. So, I should...
So, I have another question. Um, so I was Googling, uh, looking at Efficiency Main site, and, um, and just EV chargers in Maine, and as Sandra had brought up in the previous meeting, we're not on their map, so I'm, I'm hoping that when we get the signs up and everything...
We're not on Efficiency Babe's map either?
We're, I think we're on Efficiency Main.
Let's see. Unless I'm just not looking.
But we're not.
But it's all on Google, right?
So, I don't know how, you know, if there's anything we have to do or ask of Efficiency Main?
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Fire department door. Which means the truck.
Which means the truck, yeah, so obviously, we all know now that we got the measurements back for the truck. The truck is not gonna fit in the building because of the incline of the, the parking lot. Uh, the highest that the back of the truck could have been to have zero clearance was 10 to 2. And so, at 10, almost 6, that's four inches that we just can't cram, so. I have talked with Terry and Chuck, and I've talked to Jeremy, so Jeremy knows that he's just waiting to hear back from us at this point. Um, so I've talked with Terry and Chuck about the next step, going back to the driving board to figure out what, what to do from here, so.
So, it, just, so I understand, so our, our down, down payment, all of it can go towards?
Yes, as long as we stay with Brindley Bowman, yep, yep. The other thoughts, questions?
I know you two have been involved with, like...
Yeah, we're just kinda getting started on the conversation, we're gonna have to sit down and start looking at, you know, more than just one option like it was before, you know? One thing we were talking about is if we could find like a new demo that was, you know, fairly reasonable. Um, if it was something that we had to bring to the town to say, hey, maybe could we get a little more to get this new truck versus buying a used one? And also looking at, you know, getting a truck that's gonna fit the department's needs, what they want. Preferably something we can get in without having to modify the building. If that's not available, then, you know, we still have the option with the door if we've got it. But we also gotta keep in mind too about the other truck coming back. When that tanker comes back, there's gonna be a place for it, so all of these things need to be considered before decision is made.
I will say, Erin, on your fire trucks, when you start looking, underneath they may say deep south trucks, they're coming from the deep south. Stay away from that, I found out last night, the Brown will get stuck with it. When they say deep south, they build them quick and they modify them for the south, they don't modify them for cold weather up here. Brown will find out real quick, their, their truck will rewire it, and harness it because of the cold weather, it wouldn't work. You gotta be careful on that.
I would like to, um, at some point Terry and Chuck call Jeremy, and we can schedule a time to do that with either, either with Elena and either myself or Aaron, or one of the select board members. Call, and, um, if you guys have a list of things that the truck absolutely needs, um, so that we can sort of provide Jeremy, because he indicated that he oftentimes knows of trucks that are not officially on the market, but he can make phone calls, and so if we call the list, there are trucks that may not be on the website that, that he's aware of, and so I'd rather do that sooner than later.
Yeah.
So that we can, we can talk to him about the trucks that they have listed. You know, and, and instead of, um, I think the last time it just got there were multiple conversations going on with him, and I'd rather do it together and, and keep that, um, because I don't know what you guys need, but a select board member and the town manager are the ones that are authorized to, to sign at the end, so, so let's get that in the works, um...
You gotta be careful too, if he, he can buy another trucks, or if he buys it from a different place, because they're, they're brokers.
Right.
Might crank the price up a little bit, so there's a lot of different things we gotta work in there.
So, um, I don't know, uh, if, if it's possible, I mean, we could have for more than one select board person to be at a meeting where we discuss this new truck, it would have to be a public meeting, um, it would have to be public, it would have to be, um, posted. And so, like, I'm more than happy to, I, I think that, that Erin has some good thoughts about it, um. I think it might be in our best interest to next week sometime, I think we have, we would have time to post something, I don't anticipate, um, that it would make it too crazy, I think we just need to have a, a conversation and get things laid out so that we can make that call and, and really be sort of all on the same page. And he knows our budget, um, and then sort of turn him loose and see what he can, he can do for us, because I don't wanna pay more than we need to do, you know?
No, no, I don't.
But I feel like we're, we're tied in with Brindley, because if we don't buy a truck for them, we are going to lose some of that deposit, and we don't wanna do that. And they've got some, I mean, they've got some brand-new trucks, of course, none of them have prices on them, it's a call for quotes, but...
And one last night I looked at, beautiful truck, $369,000, and it won't fit. After I looked at it, I said, oh, trash.
So, I, I feel like Jeremy can help us with some of that, so we should, we should figure out either an evening next week or an afternoon where we can, where we can get together and, and really start hashing through that, because I don't wanna, I don't want it to be pushing the delivery date way out into the future, like, you guys need a truck, and so let's get on that and, and make it happen.
They look at the engine and the night, we're calling. Don't get into that.
So, I'm wondering if, because you both have been kind of involved knowledge about that, I don't think we have to have a full select board meeting, um, but we could authorize one of you, um, to meet with Elena and Terry, and um, and even make that call and then bring back to us the information. That's just one idea, I don't know.
Right.
I'd like to see if is that when we do this, if we can have Jeremy on the computer, see what he's talking, so we can do that, and he probably will, and we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely.
What we want. I mean, hopefully collaborate, talk together at once, and then say, okay, maybe we go for this now.
Right, right.
So, should we have like a preliminary call with him, and then, I'm just trying to toot out how?
Big outlet, yeah. Um...
I mean, we can put in a call and kind of, you know, give him what you guys are looking for, let him do a little bit of work and research.
Then come back.
And then come back, and he can say, okay, this is what I found. You know, option A, option B, option C.
I'm hoping my goal, I'm hoping is that we're hoping we get this truck by, first of summer, middle of summer, so we can train this.
Right.
Come October, go whether it trains or, we can get guys familiar with it, train with it, work with it, drive it.
Absolutely.
We just want good muscle to do it.
Yeah.
But, like I said, just filling in a form.
So, I'm not sure what, what that next step is, I mean, I feel like I've been working with Jeremy, but I think Erin has some thoughts on it as well, so I don't know if it...
Well, I mean, it, it could we could post it as like a, a planning session, and that way you both could be there.
Right.
And, and we're, we're just covered that way, and then we can have all ideas on board.
Right.
That's not the easiest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So, I don't know if there's a there are a couple hours behind us, I think.
An hour.
Is it just one?
Yeah.
Um, and so, we'll wanna take that into consideration, so that we, we do it at a time that he's available.
Right.
So, do you wanna reach out and find some times next week?
Yeah.
He would, and then talk to Terry, I have a lot of, like, I, I can have some flexibility, um...
Later and after, even if he runs out the firework. Where the guy I'm working with, I work is picked up and picked up.
Yeah.
But if it's after four or any of that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with him. Yeah.
I think Jeremy would probably stay.
I'm sure he would.
I'm pretty sure one of the calls we made, he must have kids, they, they were kids in the back of the car, so I knew he was at home, so it's...
Jeremy got work.
Absolutely.
And I mean, you really think about it, most of it was what they told me, not saying anything.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
He truly kept us in the bedroom, got work with us, and he can only
Absolutely. Okay. Can't just be anything. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was the first time in history that they've ever had to do that. That's what they told me. They've already done, they've already done work on that truck.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Yes. And he said that they work with fire departments so much that they're willing to eat that.
I mean, they're, they're going above and beyond, sir.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're, they're, they're selling a fire truck, but well, it's been a process, and so I, I, I thank you guys for working with us almost, we're gonna make it happen.
I wanna get that particular, I don't, it's gotta be chief and, and wildlife chief. Anyways, I just wanna be on the same page, if you guys work this out, make something work for the town, it's got to be active, and, and we all on the same page, nothing hidden anymore, it's
Yes, absolutely, I'm with you on that.
But I will, I will say that.
I, I'm, I'm guessing that it, that it, that it...
I mean, to find the truck.
How tall is the truck now?
I can't remember, just under, just under 10 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Phil and I, we had a little nightmare, holding stuff up.
Yeah.
I, I assume that it probably will, but I think rather than doing it now, let's figure out the truck and then...
There was a couple others I saw that were lengthwise, would come in, but lengthwise was long, too long. That was the thing, the cab was right, but the truck was too long, it's
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. When it comes in, when it comes in, that's what we gotta worry about the back.
Yeah.
If one side gets in, then
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And we'll, we'll wait, um, to hear from Elena as far as...
With Jeremy, yeah.
One thing, just, I've reached out to Safety Works. Um, lady was supposed to call me back today, her secretary said she could try to call me today, if she can't, maybe tomorrow, she's busy. But it's not to be a lie, and what Safety Work does, they'll come in, and they'll sit with you, me, Chuck, and they'll go all over our records, what we got in the station, and then she'll make notes. And it might be 30 days, the 60s say, you gotta fix these things, and we'll be back, but they're here, they don't charge us, they're here to upgrade us, to tell us what we need to be.
Okay.
The only reason I call them, because I'm taking the heat as chief, doesn't matter what line you did in the past, if somebody goes out there tonight, my fire gets hurt, it's on me.
It's on you, yeah.
And I got some, so she's gonna come in, and I worked with Brian yesterday a little bit, because he's wanting beg, and he said, I'll show you what I did, and what is 30 bucks, I said, no. We have them, but they just come and talk to you, what the town needs to do, what we need to do, and they lead us in the right direction, see if it fixes that. So, hopefully she'll get in touch with me, and just as soon as that's done, lady will be there, Phil will be there, where we have, what we have to do, so it's not a hit, but it's just the guideline to help us. And we're hoping, in the last year or two, our records have been good in the training, so we'll, we'll see what they look for. And, because Brian said, when he stepped in as chief, she came and saw him, and it was the last four miles long that he'd get down in Dover, and he said, I forget, he came back, why don't you came back 60 days and you get a file? And it wasn't on him, he was fine at work, he gave us stuff in the past, but he kinda didn't think he'd come back, that's what I'm telling you. So.
Terry, thank you so much for doing that.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
I just, I don't wanna take the heat for anything, and let you can lead us in doing, and tell us what we need to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Terry, we're really here to, to support you guys, and whatever we need to do.
So, I just wanted, you heard the rumor, they're not here, they're just a guide, one of the guys.
Yeah, I, no, I think that will be very beneficial to all of us, really.
Well, she'll be looking at your, your equipment.
Equipment, some of that, equipment, the friends, we mind, which is the first of the records.
Okay.
And what guys have been training, and where we can go for training, and if we got new guys, what we have to do to train them, and they just give you time to, uh, work it out and get things done, and she might look at it and say, well, I gave you 60 days, where you just knew as chief, and, or she might give you 30 days, I think.
Okay.
They're really good to work with.
Okay, perfect.
All right, um, so ATV club contracts are next on our list.
Uh, traffic control.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I skipped right over that, traffic control, um, on North Camp.
Um, so, I think I mentioned... I think I mentioned last time that I had, um, requested a quote for some of the, the, the temporary speed bumps, they look very good quality, and, and just seemed like they'd be just what we need, so I did get, um, the pricing back. Uh, they're a little more than I would have thought, a little less than she would have thought, so, um, so for the, there, there are a couple of options, there's, um, so what they are is they're speed tables, which means they have a flat top.
Okay.
Um, so they have two different styles, one has yellow squares and one has white arrows. So, the yellow squares, for whatever reason, are more expensive than the white arrows, and then also, there's, um, we could be, if we were a member of Sourcewell, which I'm not real clear what that is, but it doesn't cost us anything to be a, a member, then, um, shipping is included, the, the delivery, whereas if we're not, they're not, so, being a Sourcewell member, including delivery, um, with the arrows... Including delivery, um, with the arrows, they're forty-four seventy-five each, so that would be a total of thirteen thousand. Four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And with the.
For three of them.
For three of them, yeah.
Okay.
Cause we were thinking right before Willimantic Road, um, I think they've gotta be a hundred and twenty feet back from where.
The intersection is.
Merge, and then one in the middle, um. So with the squares, they're five thousand sixty-two dollars for a total of fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, and that would include delivery.
Are the the arrows like on a side of?
Yeah, I looked, they're they're um, so the one with the squares, they it just has yellow squares all over it.
Okay.
The ones with the arrows, and they're not really arrows, they're more like, they're shaped like that, um, and they're on the edges.
Okay.
Are these the ones?
And they're reflective.
Are these the ones that allow emergency vehicles?
That is an option, um, I don't have pricing on those ones, he didn't send me that, but there is, yes, there is an option where. They come in in pieces, and you can space them so that emergency vehicles, their their tires can straddle it, because. They're bigger than a regular car, um, and then that wouldn't slow them down, but these tables are not as. Abrupt, I guess, as a speed hump, because that that's another thing that they, um, so yeah, there is the the option also of the. The mats, I think they're called.
Okay, and they're, how um? How are they attached, I guess?
They they get um lagged to the road. And then you can move them, you can take them up for the winter, which we would have to do. Um, if we ever wanted to borrow them for another section of town for any reason, we could do that, um. So that's, that's.
Where these gonna be stationed by?
On North Guilford Road.
And where on the north?
From the Willimantic Road, basically to the intersection.
Okay.
So you might hit a couple of them on your daily. You might hit a couple of them on your daily commute.
Wow, I was thinking to, dug my cow, we have to sleep a dip in it.
That's an idea.
Boy, imagine, go, 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 I will get the.
Um.
I think like garage construction is helping some people slow down and gawk.
Yeah, yeah, it. It is.
And this this money wasn't um discussed at the budget meetings, um, so it wasn't actually added to the budget, um. Elena and I talked today, and and we we do have some road improvement. Um, reserves, that would be something to maybe consider.
Is that another road repair, would it come out of that?
Yeah, pretty much.
And it wouldn't be too late to put that on the town meeting warrant, because that would have to go before the town.
Uh, we need to do something on that.
It really, yeah.
Um, I think it would be a good investment, um.
Yeah.
And if we want to put it on the word, I could type it up, and so that you guys could sign that today.
Um. I'm just gonna ask the material that they're made out of. Is there a a lifespan for these?
Um, well, it's um, I I don't know exactly, um, I did, it may have been in there, but um. It's from Traffic Logix, which has, you know, quality.
Yeah.
Traffic things, um, and it's made from recycled rubber.
Okay.
Um.
And if we're only leaving it down during the month.
The suburbs.
Right. Um, I I just probably get more information about that.
Okay, I was just.
And see what what the, and and I bet that there's probably a lot of variables that would go into that, you know. I suppose, so it probably would be hard to say.
Is there, is is there any thought if. I mean, you said three, if we couldn't do three because of cost, is there a way that we could do? One and test? Rather than do.
Well, the thing is, like, basically from, you know, they get going down the hill.
Or even two of them, if we did two of them, it would need to be a warrant warrant article, because we could spend up to ten thousand without. Word article, um, it, but yeah, I.
And the reason why we we talked about three was because. When they get going down the hill and hit the Willimantic Road, it would stop, slow them down from there, and if we had one there. There's all that opportunity to just tromp on it through the neighborhood until you see the yield sign, and if you put them further back from the yield sign. Then, I mean, everybody's seen people just go, they don't even look, they just go isn't right out onto Route fifteen. I mean, if we had to, yeah, but um ideally.
Okay.
But you know, if anybody has different thoughts about that, that was just the reasoning.
For three.
For for three.
Right.
Just because it's such a span of.
Right.
Of road that.
And Steve is kinda aware.
Our thought processes, yeah.
He actually went out and did measuring.
Okay.
Um, because I needed to know how far it was and and all of that, that part of where the three. But you know, if we did just start with two, say, and and try it out, then, you know. We could try to place them strategically enough so that it they would be effective through the neighborhood. And going out onto Route fifteen.
Do you have any chance, get any prices on signage for those?
Oh, to warn, oh, uh, they're they won't be expensive, a sign is, you know, thirty bucks, maybe fifty. But yeah, it would be nice of us to give ahead of that. They'll be on to us pretty soon, we tried to do that. Yeah, maybe that would be effective.
Sam, do you live on a stretch?
Well, people coming off of Route fifteen are possibly a bigger problem than people coming down the hill.
So that'd be another good reason to have it right there at the the yield side.
They love, nobody's coming, and they. It's both ways.
Yeah, yeah, I hadn't even thought about it that way.
So if, what if we? Placed one right after the Willimantic Road, and then one just before the yield side?
Which yield side?
The yield side to Greeville Road.
Kathy's house.
Right. Yeah, no, so just just after Willimantic Road, and then just before the beginning of North Guilford. Or, oh, well, how far?
Come on for Route fifteen.
Yes, so, right, so it would be as close as the intersection as we can get legally. One right there, and then one right after Willimantic Road, then that would just give us.
Say after Willimantic, coming down.
The hill, you go past Willimantic.
Yeah, just after, okay.
Right, cause that's really where the house.
Start there, yeah.
Um, I mean, we could try two of them, and see if that is effective.
So, okay, if we did that, then we could.
That's.
It is, so I mean, but we started with two, and I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't wanna go with the arrows, I mean, who cares, I think. So you know, that would be.
It's a lot of money, I just. This is gonna hurt, and.
Yeah.
I don't want that, I don't want that.
Nine thousand dollars, and you know, if we if we did that, then we could. Rather than later, I don't know how how long it will take them to come in, or I haven't had that discussion yet, but.
Where we're coming into the suburbs.
Right, and Memorial Day, weekend's coming up, and it just, good, good time, I.
Uh, you know, it's just, I was thinking about this today, you know, we had a lot more traffic on that road in recent years, um. For numerous.
Those people.
Exactly. Just.
It's a lot more now with the. Wow, it was pretty quiet, now it's getting busy, busy.
Yeah, it varies throughout the year, depending on when the main road's good, they'll take that, and then the back road's good, they'll take that.
Yeah. It's getting busy now.
Yep.
And are these wide enough, that that area down where the the Willimantic Road and the North Guilford Road merges is? I mean, it would be up a ways from that intersection, I would think, but that's pretty wide right there.
Yeah, so I think Marty measured.
Wide or long, because they're gonna be twenty-one feet to to cross the road, so that measurement is good, cause Steve went and measured it. Um, across there, they're ten and a half feet across, wide, I guess, um.
No, like the.
The three inches.
Like the width of the road.
The width of the road there, but if it's up closer to um. The houses, that that raised the point initially.
Right, he um, he took several measurements, and I, the average was like twenty-two.
Yeah. Do you, well, I don't know, what do you think? Been living their life.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And they both fit that.
Yeah.
And you know, there are others too that. So how long is it gonna be before those go walking off?
Right.
Both of them are solid.
Yeah.
I'm assuming they're probably security style bolts, so you wouldn't be able to just take a socket.
And I I imagine these things are very, very heavy, very heavy. So.
Yeah, so you're not just gonna throw it the back of your truck.
No.
See you later.
No.
So, it it is expensive, but it's an investment that's gonna pay us back, I think, so, I'm for it. It it's certainly more cost effective than some other options, and I mean, other than completely changing that to a stop sign now.
Hmm.
Which, you know, DOT kinda. They're they're just gonna blow through it anyways, but.
Um, we talked also about little flags.
Right, and I did not find any of those anywhere.
What happened to the vital ones we ordered?
They're still on there.
No, we ordered some new ones, uh. Have they dog come in yet? Is that the box on the counter?
No, no, that's um, that's.
Oh, gross, uh.
I may not have pushed send. That could be, it would be still.
So what we, we did find the metal ones, but we did find some vinyl ones that are a lot better than what we have, and uh. Fairly cheap too, so, we were gonna attempt that, and and put them at the angle that. Uh, the metal ones would be at.
Somebody thought that somebody made those, but I do see them in a lot of towns, so I don't think somebody made them.
Maybe Traffic Logic has some.
Maybe, I I'll look, actually. Yeah.
So we're thinking, I mean, twenty-five mile an hour sign?
Yes.
Yeah.
On both.
Oh, both sides, yeah.
So tomorrow, then I'll I'll um, reach out and just see what the lead time might be, should I, um. Is there any questions that we want to ask them before?
What's the shipping price?
Well, with, if I sign up for this thing, then it, the shipping will be included, and what I did was I compared. The cost that includes shipping, cause it's more than the co- without, and it's it's over two hundred dollars a piece. Cheaper, so I've imagined that the the. If they're, if that's some kind of a deal for you, then it's gotta be pretty expensive, I would think, but anyway, this would be shipping included.
Sounds good.
All right, so do we want to order, or do we want to just? Find out more?
I'm intending to say order.
Yeah.
We've, yeah, I know, I trust your search on this, and, um. Your judgment, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We need it soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I say go for it.
Okay.
All right. Now look for. Um, see if they have any flags.
Maybe they'll give us a discount.
Maybe they'll throw some in.
Right, yeah.
And then also, um, like, one warning sign, two.
What going this way, what coming this way, so.
One on the jump pole on the island, there was a triangle.
Speed helps the head.
So maybe three.
Oh, coming in from.
Taking people coming up fifteen.
Like, coming both ways from fifteen, right?
The other side that says, big bumps next. Thousand feet, quarter mile.
Right.
You could just put one on either end.
True.
Give some money more.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to, unless it's unless it's far enough up.
Right.
Then you could get away with one after the intersection. Right.
It's supposed to be going twenty-five miles an hour.
It's slowed down.
Maybe three, three sounds like a reasonable.
Yeah. Yep.
I can't wait to get this. Uh, it's been such an issue. Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, next is ATV club. Um, so, last year, I know that Abbott um initiated and brought us a contract.
I haven't heard from any of the the ATV clubs yet.
Bathfish Valley is is the one, um, kinda I'm more curious about, because, um. They had not had DOT permission historically.
Right.
To, um, go up from Elliot Hill Road into town on the state road, so they needed to work with DOT to get that.
Right.
Understand, um, so, you know.
I don't, I don't have the contact.
Yeah.
Charge, and kinda help them with that whole process.
Yeah, good, good.
And he said, you know, they may not even worry about it, but he was gonna reach out to him to say, look, this is what I do, I can help you. Get this moving along.
He mentioned that last year. But if there's a way to contact Abbott as well, just say we.
Yeah, I I'm surprised.
I don't think it was a two-year contract they gave us, I thought it was every year.
I'll I'll check, but I I thought it was every year too.
And it should be every year, because we have, you know, in the contract, it says that we, um, can reassess, you know.
Do we know, like, who the head of the Abbott?
It was um Mickey.
Knowles.
Yep.
He was their select board chair when they came, and he was the one who kinda added it up.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and I know, you know, we we would need to sign those contracts, so if they come in before, I mean, we won't have a June.
Right.
Meeting, unless we have a quick one after the town meeting, sign it out.
Right. Okay.
All right, solar uh ordinance extension.
Um, so, I've. I told you guys that you guys can vote to extend the solar moratorium, uh, for a hundred and eighty days, you guys could extend it for. And I talked with James, and he said that, uh, they probably won't need the full hundred and eighty days, but I said. At least if something comes up, it buys them a little bit more time, if they need more time, um, so.
Did he mention what, um, what their, like.
Time frame is?
Yeah, or what they need to do.
It's pretty much.
It it's pretty much done, and.
Thinking of, uh. It was largely done, and then, um. It it kinda got slowed down, some some changes, um, and I know that they've been discussing with, um. With legal advice, how to to. To put some, um, there's one project that was in the works. Tyler has a project, and, um, he made some proposals, and I think the the league, I think. Without getting into the weeds, I think, the the legal guidance was, you can't quite do what what. He wanted, and so it's been, they have been working, I think, pretty diligently on it.
Yeah, and he was talking about, uh, maybe even having a public hearing, and then maybe having a warrant to, a second warrant. To go along with our town meeting, uh, because we're, this warrant is already set, and like, we have to send the. Town report to the printers, so I told them that we don't really have enough time to put it on this warrant, but we could. Town report to the printers, so I told them that we don't really have enough time to put it on this word, but we could do like what we did with the fire department. It'd have like a separate warrant at the town meeting, it'd just kinda carry on, um so they're very, very close. Like within the next few weeks.
How many solar farms can our some states can handle?
Well, we were we were told that there's. Two possibly proposed projects. And once those two projects were completed. Nobody else would be able to tie back into the grid because CMP's grid was gonna be maxed out until they upgraded.
Oh. Um.
And a lot of that's gonna be based upon the sizes of the ones that go in.
Yeah.
Um.
And my understanding is I know I know my brother talked to to CMP and there is only one interconnected agreement. In existence right now, and so um, it.
We have a member on Zoom that would like to speak on this topic.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, Elena, my my name is Isaac Williams, we spoke on the phone, I think this past week, I uh. And just wanted to, you know, very thankful that you're providing the opportunity to join virtually since I won't, I can't be in attendance. But just to introduce myself to everyone, hi everyone, um, I'm, as you can see from my little name banner, um. I'm I'm with a with a company and it have, it's the company that uh is working with Tyler on his project. So I just wanted um, to introduce myself and also um, my. Reason for wanting to attend, Elena, was I remember we spoke last week about the ordinance being on the town warrant in June. Um, and I just kinda wanted to ask if that looks like it will still happen, or if there was gonna be a need to be a little more time. On the finalization of that, and then as you said, there would be the special like additional town warrant after. Um, it sounds like, you know, you mentioned James, I've been having some email communication with him, it looks like there's some final touches going on. So maybe there will be more time, but I just wanted to pop on A to introduce myself and say hi. Um, and then also just sort of follow up on that question we asked last week.
Yeah. Yeah, so uh there, we're still not really a hundred percent sure if it will be on the June uh meeting or not. Uh, but we could continue to communicate and I can let you know as soon as we do know.
Perfect, okay, yeah, and I I take it if it if that was decided um, for that warrant, it would. There would be notice perhaps on the town website.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, well, that's uh, that's very, that's helpful, I thank you very much, that's my, that was my main, my main question, so I'll, I'll let you all carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I I understand there's probably timelines in terms of like notification for a public meeting.
Right. Right, so. Well, that's that's the thing, so we were looking at the timeline together and uh. It. The timing will work as long as I think the, he was thinking maybe a public hearing like the twenty-eighth or something like that. Uh, but I haven't heard back from him on that, so I I'm not a hundred percent, but. He was also unsure like if it was gonna be ready for that particular one, and I assured him if it's not, we can always have a special town meeting. In which it's just the solar, solar piece of it.
I I think that they. I think they have a meeting, if I if I understood this schedule with the the lawyers going to 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 be. Involved to give. Guidance from the town's perspective on giving exemptions or or um, grandfathering.
Okay.
And uh, so I I I think that the end is inside.
That's my understanding, I thought we were. Just at the point of cleaning up the language and scheduling the hearing. Where we met last week or before. We're meeting again Tuesday, so.
Okay.
What's that?
Uh, yes, you just have to vote to accept.
Yes. Um, I'll make a motion to extend the solar ordinance uh for a hundred and eighty days.
Second.
Second, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Do you do you happen to uh receive anything from Kent this month?
Yes, um. What did I do with it?
I don't know, but if you can't find it, it's it's um.
The usual, like.
Right, and so we can we can work um, together to kinda, and you probably know what data.
Yeah.
We might be needing.
Yeah, yeah.
Gather that.
So, yes, and it seems a little bit more difficult than you would think it would be to get this kind of information. But I got what he did give me today, so I didn't have time to like.
That's okay.
Be like, okay, so what's this, 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 so, and I don't actually know everything that was going on before I got here. So I don't know what even to follow up on, and so I wanna kinda touch base with him on that too.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, so once I have time to touch base with him and be like, so what's going on with this and what's going on with that?
Basically, you know, in in his history on this is um, other towns and I. I had shared. Previous uh town manager, like some examples from other town um, code enforcement officers, just, you know, that would help us understand. You know, what's what's, you know, um, what's being addressed, what the timelines are. Um, just so that we have something on the radar if we have to be involved.
Well, Brian shared with me a a report that he had done when he was code enforcement officer and it had pictures, it had, like it was. There was a lot of information contained in that report versus, it's pretty bare bones right now, and so um. Getting that cleaned up.
Yeah.
Should be.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I'm working on this. Alright, alright, um. Dangerous building updates?
So, I don't know of any other, uh cuz I, or I haven't been involved in any of the other dangerous buildings other than Nineteenth Center Street. And I had to do some research to get myself up to speed on the whole Nineteenth Centers uh street. So. Uh, it appears that we were never properly served from Don Dunphy and um, he had ninety days to serve us.
This is for the appeal?
Yes, and so the ninety days is up on the thirteenth of this month, so. Uh, and at that time, Gray would check with the courts to see if there was something that we need to file for dismissal. Or if the court would just dismiss it on its own where it the time has run out, so after the thirteenth, I should have.
You just walked, started in.
Um, I was gonna say, so he came in here um, week or so ago um. To meet with me because he's he's looking for, cuz he did bring us some uh some paperwork uh with with an appeal on it. Um, and according to Gray, it wasn't properly done through the courts, and so it didn't really count. I don't know if he knows that or not, so he has stopped by several times looking for um, the copy that's been signed by the select board. Acknowledging receipt of that, and um, I think that Bill had been advised, you know, to not do that. Because it wasn't proper service and and all of that, so um, he told me that he has a um. Uh, contractor who is anxious to get started working on property, so I told him. I did explain that in light of everything that's going on that, and I I apologize, but it been put to the back burner. Because I feel bad because he's kind of being left in limbo a little bit, um, so I suggested that he maybe come to this meeting. Which I thought he was going to, um, and I told him also that it would probably be better to have his contractor than not. Um, because I don't know who this contractor is, I don't know, I don't know any of it, so he's here?
Uh, he he walked up to the to like back at like six, like walked around the corner and started in.
I wonder if it's locked, I didn't hear the.
So it wasn't locked? Yeah, it wasn't.
Open?
I do, I I mean, I. The pigeons have moved in to the to the open space between all the floor joists on the second floor. Um, so now I have pigeon friends living across the street.
His argument for the appeal is that, so this was in the name of Cottage Ministries care of Don Dunphy. And ca- Cottage Ministries, I guess, consists of some other people as well, and so only he was served, and so he doesn't feel like.
The Cottage Ministries is no longer.
That's what I told him, and I said, well, it's kinda been determined that that's a defunct organization and therefore it's it's just you. And then it was uh, he said he went down to the registry or something and did whatever he had to do to reinstate it, which I I don't know. I was kinda hoping he'd be here to to inform, but.
Is that the White House across the.
Yes.
Who owned that?
Don Dunphy?
Cause I was saying that. Thirty forty years and and it just keeps deteriorating, deteriorating.
Right, right.
A bunch of town went out, owned it, they just, I know back years ago, this lady that was bought some land there. Where she moved out and she wanted to buy that house, get care of it, but we've owned it and sold it. Been there besides us. So it's, he was. He was served and noticed this twenty-two years ago.
Yeah.
And I think Aaron and Jonathan, you're new to the select board since all this was going on, so it was deemed a dangerous building. Um, and it was voted on by the select board and basically it's it was gonna gonna, you know. Steps were gonna be taken to get rid of it, he did have an appeal time. He feels like he appealed and he did bring something in, but according to Gray, it wasn't done properly through courts.
I think he has to appeal it through the court.
Yeah, he does.
Right.
And I don't even think I, cuz he wanted to know if he could call our attorney, and I said, no, you can have your attorney call our attorney, and he said he didn't have an attorney. So, I don't know, it just could be more of the same.
Just drag on and.
Yeah, so.
So at this point, we we Gray can advise us?
Yeah, after the thirteen.
After the thirteen.
Yep.
There you go, save some money. Uh, oh, and the other dangerous building as well, so like the one up on Tony Hill was deemed a dangerous building as well, but that's actually town-owned property now. So, right, so you know, it it's up to us and we don't have to follow the procedure, whereas it's town-owned property. We don't have to file anything or serve anybody or anything.
Okay.
Um.
Is there, so there, this kinda summarizes into one of the items on the new business, the uh new law about tax-acquired properties. So there's no grandfather clause because uh if we own it now.
Right.
We don't have to find previous owners.
Right, and as a matter of fact, where, well, actually, yeah, so so we would, we would have to be able to recoup our expenses. Which probably would be, it's gonna be expensive to demo it and stuff, um, so.
What did the fire department takes?
We could have them do that, we can do whatever we want.
We could, there's there's a lot to it to get approved there, aren't there, in the middle of town?
Maybe, maybe though, I mean, I s- I mean, the one down here on Water Street was like thirty thousand. Right across from um, Larry um.
Harrison?
Yeah. It used, it belonged to um, what's her name, Sonia, Jeff and Kim Sonia. The one with the blue tarp on the roof and all the toys in the yard. Yep. Right, well, it still is, but it's just hanging by a thread.
So, what's our next step?
I mean, I'm gonna say, let's talk to them and feel that situation out anyways, because it would certainly be a lot more economical. Okay, fair enough.
Good, I we gotta.
For that one, no. Hmm, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay, don't trespass.
Just to cover order.
Right.
Say, screw the door, front door, shout out, put this plywood over it just to keep.
Something else, yeah.
Out or pigeons.
So no trespassing signs and board up the doors, is that what you said? Do you know what the address is? Okay, I'm just gonna write to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I have a question, the one on. On Greenville Road before Elliot's.
The red one?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
So I believe, I I'm thinking that there's the possibility that something might be done with that, um.
By the owner?
Well, by the owner's son-in-law, because they're currently living in Keith Shaw's old house. And I have heard them mention a couple times that they're gonna be moving to that house, and I saw some sign there the other day that. Some cleanup was being done, I seen some bags of trash coming out, um, so that might be starting.
Z one homes a house on the lifeboat of the town.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Same family.
The decorated one?
Alright, we can always revisit if there's no progress on that.
Yes.
Alright, um. Open market insurance premium reimbursement policy.
Okay, so um, I have been corresponding with the attorney on that, and it's looking like um. It's not something that's really gonna work out, um, be for lots of reasons, um. It's very long and involved, of course, but um, the the and also, I don't know how much I wanna get into. But um, so in my per- my own situation, um, the premium that I thought it was going to be. My husband's going off the policy right now, um, and cuz he'll be having Medicare, but so rather than the the premium going down. It's going to go up um, quite a bit, because oddly enough, I don't know who thinks these things up. But so we were a a two-person household and the income was considered. Now he's getting off the policy, so now we're considered a one-person household, but all the income is still considered, whether it's his or mine or anything. So anyway, um, and so as far as it being um, a medical thing where it wasn't taxable and stuff. That's not gonna work either for various reasons, so what it would have to really be considered would be a health insurance stipend. Which would be taxable income, which would do nothing except for drive the premium up even higher. And it's a crappy policy, so I mean, for for ten dollars a month, that was one thing, but for hundreds of dollars a month. I I would just soon um, just wash my hands of it. Um, this could be a discussion for a different day, and I it would have to do with, you know, the updating of the personnel policy. But um, perhaps if we consider that I could just maybe be eligible to be on the town insurance.
That's right.
All it would be was just changing the wording back to what it was before. Um, and then I would definitely probably be interested in doing that.
And then I would still be interested in the healthcare stipend, because I don't wanna switch from railroad insurance to the insurance here. Cuz it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't make sense for me, but to still have kinda both options.
Yeah, yeah, and and that, and so under new business, it was um, the updating personnel policy, which all this would fall under.
Fall under, yeah, so. So we could continue that conversation with that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or in whatever.
Right.
Time we get together to do that.
To do that, yeah. So.
Well, thank you for researching. So, uh uh, the N McDonald's safety grant, I I was just curious, uh, it was mentioned before, but I can't remember what that was.
Um, so the deadline for that grant was actually April fifteenth, so that's not gonna be something that we could do right now. But it is something that will be on our radar for next spring, and MMA also has another grant. Uh, that's also risk risk reduction, and the deadline for that grant is uh, September fifteenth. So we have some time to work for that, and I was just thinking, the additional lighting that we wanted on the North Guilford Road. Is that right?
Um, yeah, we we were talking about putting an additional streetlight, and I've reached out to um, affinity. And yeah, they don't like to communicate at all, so I'll I'll do it again, I'll reach out again.
And maybe if we just have like quotes or something. And maybe if we just have like quotes or something, we could use that as the grit, like.
So what we, y- you're looking for cost?
Yeah.
For that particular one, cause there was a couple more that we were considering as well.
This grid is a three thousand dollar max, so, but additional lighting is additional safety, trip hazard, and all that stuff. So tha- that's one of the things that they are willing to cover, so that was my idea of what we could go after that grant for.
Three thousand or if one is four thousand or if one is one thousand, I don't.
Right, right, so.
Okay, good to know, we can.
Yes, and that is through MMA.
MMA?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, um, uh, update on DOT Village Partnership, um.
So I reached out to Don, uh, to let him know that I would be the point of contact now. And the next step, I guess, is they're preparing a PowerPoint for the second public meeting. And once that's ready, he'll send the PowerPoint to us, so we can review it and then schedule the next public meeting. So I haven't heard anything from him since then, so I'm assuming they're still working on that PowerPoint. But they're working on it and, and they'll send it to both us and DOT as well at the same time. So Matt and I could talk about it before the public meeting and all of that stuff.
So hopefully that's incorporating all the input that they got from the first meeting.
Right. Um, I don't know, cause that's all he said was that he was working on the public PowerPoint, so. They're, how do I wanna?
It's a, a downtown revitalization and they're focused on, on traffic calming. Through the, 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 it's all on the state road, of course, um, um, make it pedestrian and cycle friendly. So, you know, we, we gave them feedback on parking and they had some properties, um, that were private that they didn't realize. Um, so they got lots of feedback, um, during that meeting.
Oh, that's funny.
My husband says I'm the queen of understatement. All right, next is the Gully Brook Bridge on LA's Phil Road in the Oyu- I put that on there because.
We don't wanna lose sight of it.
I know, um, I didn't wanna lose sight of it, but I also, um, was listening to, um. What was it, NPR, me, uh, Colin, uh, main Colin. And UMO has like the largest three D printer, um, in the country apparently now. And I was listening to some of the projects this professor said they're involved in, and they are actually working with DOT. To create, um, three D, it almost sounded like liners for culverts to make them more, um. Uh, secure, and I didn't know if that's even a possible grant option with DOT and university or.
Just be a test.
Devolved project.
Student project. I don't know if we wanna advertise it as a student. But ju- I just wanted to throw that out there, if that's even a possibility. And I don't know who we would contact.
I.
There's gotta be some kind of grant, um.
Well, that's, we have all the information that we need, like we have the plans, we have a cost estimate, we have all that information. And so like, if there are grants that you come across, please let me know, because.
We got turned down for.
For what? For a fish passage, yes. But the total cost is like, I wanna say two hundred and fifteen thousand, which.
Right.
Is a lot of money, but for a bridge, that's really not a lot of money.
Who, who designed that?
Eric Calderwood.
From DOT?
No, he's an engineer. Uh, he was recommended to me from DOT, but that's how I found him anyways. No, it would be us doing it. Yeah.
I wasn't sure what the answer.
So it would be replacing just the arch piece, cause I guess.
Just the arch piece?
Yes. Yeah.
That one's an arch, it's, it sets on cement.
Yeah, so the cement footings, I guess, is, uh, is okay, we just need the arch piece.
Expected that thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And told us that bolts. Are holding it in place. And the bolts were, well, I've been sparring twice around the year. There's no knots on the bolts, I don't think they was ever put on the bolt.
Beautiful.
But it's been there for fifty years.
Yeah.
Or more, but, uh.
I think longer than that.
In Willamette, they replaced, oh, one of them is in my brother's backyard. They're gonna replace it sometime in the next month. They worked with the state and I don't know if they got grant money and what they did. But they didn't pay, was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, tw- a hundred and twenty-five thousand each.
Okay.
And then, cause Billy London's, they as in, they put those.
Yeah.
Things in all the time.
Yeah, they did all the ones, uh, from KI to Greenville.
Yeah, that's what I wrote up for my driveway. And I was gonna say, you know, the storm we had, the couple storms we've had, um, the, the sides of the river are washing away. And so it's, it's a little iffy and it's, you know, we really should have some guardrails over that, um, that section. Yeah, I, if you're coming down the driveway and. But anyway, if, yeah, I just didn't wanna lose sight of that.
Yeah.
See what we can do. Okay, sorry to add to yours.
All right.
Oh, most of the updates, GIS map update.
Um, okay, so I talked with Judy and all the maps have been updated and Jade and I put, Jade and I, Jade, put them on the website. Um, so the new, I guess, I don't know, parcel viewer. Is now on the website, so as far as having maps printed, I made the executive decision to hold off on printing. Because, uh, we are like weeks away from doing another update. Because April first was the deadline for this year's update. And so the assessor's working diligently to provide me with the next round of updates to give to Judy. And then when she gets those updates done, she'll send me the PDF file. And we kind of searched around a little bit for different printers, because it's gonna be like four hundred and fifty dollars for, through Judy. And I think we came up with what, like a hundred and eighty?
Dollar, well, she wanted to charge fifteen dollars a page and we found someone to do it for six dollars and fifty cents a page. And that's Dexter Print, who we, we work with all the time, I think, so.
Right, so, um, so we do have smaller versions printed already that we could do in-house. But the big, big ones, I just figured, we'll just save the little ones that we have for twenty twenty-three and do twenty twenty-fours. All the big ones, when we have the full update.
I know, I just threw cell service on here, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't forget, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what else to say about that.
Yeah.
I think it's just to keep it on our radar.
Yeah.
Talk to our local representatives to see whatever they can push for us.
Have we done anything in that group?
Not yet. Yeah, I know, I looked at previously. I'm not sure who he reached out to.
I don't know either. He didn't really have too much to update either, like, over time.
I know he was saying it, it was a matter of getting a self, a, a, a company to come in.
And that's been the problem right along, I think.
But I think, you know, advocating to whoever can help us, um, local representative, it's. You know, it really is a safety issue, um, and an economic development issue. But, you know, when we had that emergency, the flooding and everything, we couldn't communicate, um, across town. We'll keep it on our radar and keep flooding away. All right, and town manager position, let's ask for this instance. Um, and the deadline for applications to be submitted is May fifteenth. Um, and. You guys suggested that we have like a, a small committee, um, to kind of review and. Involved in that, that whole process. Um, so I'm thinking, if we wanna go ahead with that, to, um. Um, a committee.
Right.
Of folks and get that together.
But that's still the direction that, that we wanna go in, I mean, I feel like we've, um. How many applications are?
Five, I think.
So I, like, I don't know what other thoughts anyone has. About that process, like I initially was thinking that, you know, we burned through, um, the last few town managers. And, and, uh, uh, had a pretty good clip. And, and my thought was that if we put together, um, kind of a community committee. That could go through. Those applications, um, and go through that process. If maybe we could forestall that, uh, you know. The next person might be here for a little longer period of time, um.
I think your thought, you know, um, and I liked it, is, you know, we, we never had community input on previous, um, committees. You know, hiring committees, um, and it's always, always helpful to have that perspective as well.
Did we do background checks? I mean, we do like, one of the town managers, did we do a background check? Just, I'm just.
I can't answer that, I have no idea. You know, I, I.
Was it that one involved?
I think that's the situation that I would like to avoid that very thing of. And, and I, I, my, my personal thought was that getting more input is, is always to a point, um.
So, question I have, not that I'm expecting it, but if we get a lot of people banging at the door to all get on that committee. How are?
I don't know.
How are we gonna choose? I don't, I don't foresee it happening, but we'd have to be prepared for that situation.
Yeah, if we could say, like, we, we have a limited, you know, a number that we want. Yeah.
And how many people, we thinking, five, ten, three?
I think six hundred. No.
At twenty, we don't wanna leave out the other twenty, if we're gonna go six hundred, we might as well.
Right. I'm fine with that. The other thought, the other thought I had though is getting some input from department. Town department heads, I don't know if that's an option, I don't know if we should just, the, the three of us. Go through it, I.
Yeah, we, 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 you guys, they should make that decision, you could get background checked and make that decision. Cause the town might vote, say, yeah, it sounds great, you guys might say, I don't know.
Well, I mean, that, that committee wouldn't, that committee wouldn't actually be voting, they'd just have an opinion, just kind of say.
Advisory.
Yeah.
The, the way they, usually, I don't know if they still do, usually saying, we've been through a lot of town heads still. Is, here we have the county clerk. And I believe it was five counties could kind of do a review. And then they picked the two candidates that they feel the best and they brought them to the site. The other one's gotta work with them.
I mean, we could, we could recruit people for that, I, I think that, um.
If we had like representatives from different aspects of the community.
Right.
Um, that would be helpful.
Would community people be part of any kind of interviewing process as well? Because that would maybe be weird, but also necessary, if they're gonna have any input, then they would have to know. What they're all about.
Like, I don't know how it's been done in the past, I was more thinking of like when I've been on hiring committees for, for. Education. Um, and that process seems to work well, you get a representative, you don't always agree. But it comes to consensus, um.
Maybe if you have residents who have experience hiring people, that would be a good.
Absolutely, that would be great.
excluding anybody who hired the last two town managers?
Uh, I've included in the last two.
Me too. Well, and I, I see sort of a tiered approach too, you know.
Well.
Of looking at, you know, what from the resume.
No, I, I was the last two, I was the last town manager, so.
What are the last three town managers?
Well, yeah, but.
Take five people that own a business here, that reflects on the town and, and brings women with you guys. Really, your town is made up of your businesses here, I think they'd have a better input of what you got and. We don't want nothing new. Now, I've been bragging about driving off six managers.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we can.
So I, I, I mean, I think. We're in a position where it hasn't closed yet. And so it's not something that, that needs to be decided tonight, but I think having an idea, so that. I, I mean, we, it would be nice to get this settled. Not too far down the road. I mean, I think, I don't think it's realistic to think that by the, the town meet, meeting, I don't think that gives time for process.
Real big picture is you guys gonna work with them.
Yeah.
Her or him, whoever, so I mean, it's really on you guys to make that decision.
Unfortunately, what looks good on paper.
Right.
Oh, I know.
Doesn't, we've, we've all been there. Could you review the application, just say, these two just are not qualified, so.
Yes.
Right, that's why I was saying we could whittle it down. We just, you know, we clearly offer interviews to those who really meet the qualifications that we.
You put that out, you put quite a bit on, for an application, what the qualifications are. If they've ever been town managers or any of that.
Right.
All right.
Okay, on slide from one office to another office. You go from one office over there to this office.
All right, on to the new business, town's report.
Jerry.
Is there anything different from what you can email us?
Uh, yes, but only one thing.
Okay.
Only one minor detail. Uh, the article thirty-four would be. The authorize the select board to transfer funds from the town reserve accounts up to ten thousand dollars. So that was a new article that I actually added last year, because I had learned that in Brown. So that was a new article that I actually added last year because I had learned that in Brownville, so I kind of brought it over here. So I did add that, but that was the only change.
Oh, so that's not like a ongoing policy, that has to be voted every year?
Yeah. Uh, no, but I did not change anything, anything.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, town meeting warrants are pretty, unless there's something new and different.
Me, we went through it with the budget.
Yeah.
Budget.
Yep.
Committee stuff and I, I, like, I think there may be some, um, some questions, but there always are, right? And so, I, I, I mean, I didn't see anything when I read through it that was. That was, uh.
Yeah.
Not expected.
Yeah, and I think everything has an explanation, so. If you guys want to vote, sorry.
Yes.
So make a motion that we accept the town warrant, the town with, or warrant?
As written. I'm a second.
Did you want to say that again, or are you?
No, I.
And we are hoping to send that out tomorrow to the printers.
They're gonna love me this time.
Earlier than usual, that's for sure.
Poor people through the wringer every year. And last time they told us that they're gonna like give me their less than two weeks notice fine going forward.
Good job, Marty.
Yeah, so. We're on it this time. Um, I'm going to request that we have it as soon as possible, but we don't have to be like, I need it next Thursday. So.
Hopefully like.
But we, we, you have to have it seven days before the town meeting, but I'd love to have it two, three weeks before the town meeting, so. As soon as possible. And I think that if we give them two weeks, then I think that's probably fair and I think they can do it.
I'm sorry, I had this question and I hope it's not too late to ask this. So on the warrant. Under article two, it states voting for select board will be done at the town office between the hours of eight AM and five PM on June thirteenth. The language on the post, posting on the Facebook page and, and town website. Also included that voting could also occur at the gym until six o'clock and I didn't know if we should have the same language on the warrant.
So it's not continuing at the gym until six o'clock. It's once the meeting starts, there will be opportunity. For anyone who hasn't voted to vote. And then after that, we're going to count them at town meetings.
So. So if someone, I just didn't want to have a situation where people don't come to the. So people don't come to the meeting because they think they can't vote. Once they, um, does that make sense?
Okay, so. Right, so it should say, it should say in there that, um. There will be an opportunity to vote at town meeting as well. And then I, we also put on the posting that all these other, um. Positions will be voted on at town meeting. So maybe we should add that. Want me to do that real quick?
Um, I haven't.
Oh, you have it up?
Sorry, I meant to mention that before.
No, that, that makes sense. And this is just how it was last year, so we just changed it up. But now I agree.
Okay, so what should I write?
Make it say whatever else.
I like that plan.
And also a town meeting at six. But also, uh.
Six.
Cause we did have a, um. Little situation like last year, I remember, that was confusing for folks. Not always.
As I say, every time we have a bill, it's always done to.
At the meeting.
At the town meeting.
It started. With COVID.
It's so much more having it all day versus just a town meeting. And I feel like it gets. Of the town is covered and more have say. I am a hundred percent actually of my town manager letter I wrote for the book this year. I encouraged everybody to. To every meeting, every select board meeting, because that's how. And so, yeah, I. Yeah.
It was a hundred and ninety-eight shares. They were all four and there was at least thirty-five people standing.
Must've been some high issues on that, Jen.
Okay, so I just printed that.
Sorry.
I'll get you a new one to side.
I'm so sorry, I shouldn't like.
No, me too. And this is, this is gonna be the final way. I mean, we've been walk on procedure for three years now and this is. I think a win, win, win for everything.
Yeah.
And whereas it's done by secret ballot, we can do it this way. We don't have to only have it at, at town meeting, so. Sort of that. But I, I also like the idea of giving people a less opportunity at town meeting too. Cause if they were at work and they race home and, you know, so I just, I just love the whole thing. And then the votes also get counted at town meetings. So nobody knows anything before anybody else.
I'll. Any discussion? I want all in favor.
It's my daughter's.
Oh, no, it isn't. Quickly limit it on the key.
Oh, it's mine.
You know, the last time too, saying.
I can find it, cause it's close. Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Next up is fire department ordinance. Um, we, we've mentioned this in the past, but we need to take action on it, so. As we had kind of mentioned when we, um, met a couple of weeks ago, our attorney, uh, has advised us. And, um, that there were follow, I'm trying to say, follow through on a two thousand seventeen letter.
Yes.
Um, that the attorney wrote back then, um, to. Just make everything legal in terms of our fire department, it's a municipal voluntary fire department. It's a department of the town. The liability. Is crucial, uh, for us to do this. Uh, so we, there was a draft ordinance at some point in the past. We. Nobody knows whatever happened to that.
Yeah.
So we. Yeah, it dated like in the year two thousand and it never went to town meeting that we can determine. So anyway, we, we just need to fix things and make it proper. So I guess we need to put together draft ordinance. And have a, I'll look here. And then, uh, another town meeting.
And another town meeting. Maybe that could coincide with the solar thing. We don't, uh, have that. Yes. Yeah.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's basic.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Exactly. All that is kind of.
So I don't know if, I, I know MMA has some, um, ordinances on their site. We can take those. And, you know, of course have our attorney.
Yep. We do still have the draft ordinance as well, so we could kind of base it off that. And then. MMA and maybe even looking at Dover's and because, uh, John Simcoe actually reached out to me and let me know that. Uh, he helped actually do the Dover's order, um, and that they would be willing to share it with me.
You find and don't have to be sworn in, but if I put an officer.
Right.
Gotta come to you guys.
Right.
Thank you, Terry. You're right on it. Much appreciated. Okay, so do you wanna? Give those and we can look at this at our next meeting?
Yeah. So you, so just copies of the one we have, one from MMA that surrounding town, maybe?
Okay.
Yes, I am. Yeah.
Forward stuff as you get it so that. It start.
Yes, so I mean, the MMA one I could get easy. I have the one for. Already, so really the only one that I would need is from Dover, so I said the two that I have tomorrow. The one that I said. So I'll say the MMA one, then I might even be able to get the Dover one tomorrow, but I'll just.
They're members now. We got the members. You can access the website. You have so much helpful information.
Have you gotten any correspondence from that? Then you must have tried.
Yeah, Jonathan had actually written that to me the other day.
Took a weed. Oh, I did.
Unless.
Yeah.
You have to pay membership though for. No?
No, well, there's no separate membership for everybody.
Cause I think it's as a town.
As a town, so yeah, so you just, I guess, make your own account, you know.
Affiliation with the town lots of.
They'll ask you what your position. Alright, sorry. Uh, fire department grants. I probably put this on there, I can't remember.
Yes. So that we don't lose that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we all recognize the importance. That. That we take advantage of the knowledge of us and part of other departments. And find out what, what grants they're applying for and like. We're going to be asked to do more and more with less and less support financially and the town's not going to see a huge increase. In revenue, I don't think. But I do think that the costs for the fire department are going to continue to go up. Meet those needs is to pursue grants. I don't see any other way. Other than, you know, reaching out to some of our elected. You know, leaders that. Probably have other things on their plate, but I think, you know, as often as we can tell people like rural. Fire departments are just being eaten alive and we don't want. To lose our department to that. Because if the cost gets so out of control and the town can't support it anymore. So I think we have to be looking at grants. I know Erin had talked about.
I guess they sued, you know, emailed a couple, a bunch of cheats on and I looked up and found a few.
Right.
You know, we can sit down with you guys and see if it's anything you're interested in. You know, and some of them are, there was one through three M, I think it's three M, it was. They were just in, small individual ones. I mean, you could put in for a grant to get, you know, an SCBA mask or a tank.
Yeah.
Or something to do even with your office or anything like that. Just, you know, any little smaller ones, you know, get as many little small ones as you can. And then obviously try to get the big ones.
Yes.
I just have a question, you guys.
Sure.
Do you guys, or are you guys willing to take a vote to authorize us to apply for all the grants that we got?
Well, I guess that would go through Elena though, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you would be signing off on that?
Yeah.
I'm not saying to spend any money, I'm just saying.
Give us the okay that we can vote for.
Yeah.
We're not gonna spend money before it comes to say, hey, this is available.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, I think.
Elena's agreed to do the.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think the big thing is gonna be just keeping Elena up to date on what you're applying. So that we know like what's, what's been applied for, if that makes sense.
Just so that we have it all, like maybe even just making a binder of all the ones that we've applied for this year with all the information that we've. Like what we actually applied for, so that when we do it again, we'll have all that information right there. We could just pull it.
She put it in. Fire, fire station last year, towns that were small again. I mean, if you go through Corinna, look at the station, that was out of her, her funding.
Did I read correctly that that's Milo is getting a new safety building through the same process? Safety. Yep. Yeah, said their portion that they have to spread out of their own cost is like eight hundred and fifty thousand out of six billion.
Out of.
Six billion for the, um, for their whole building.
So I'm just curious, where is Senator Collins accessing these funds?
She may not come, but she'll send people.
Glenn, you might be able to answer this. Bicentennial when she came. Who was, do we have a contact person? Do you know who?
Was it John Whitmore?
Eye contact. I mean, she has a warm spot from once and she used to be on the board of.
Right.
This one's, this one is today. Just say she did approve money for the department, build a new building, so you could do that. We could add land to put it on.
You can add that in.
We can add it.
Yeah, found a company called.
Yeah.
That could be included in that.
And if she walks through and sees what we got underneath on top of this page, we might as well.
He said I've, I've contacted her office. He was there every year at the Hyman's convention. All four apart.
That's what we need. And I know there's an opportunity that Sue. Or somebody emailed about Dr. Evans, who's just a candidate. I don't even know who he is. I don't even know what his.
Yeah.
What his affiliation is.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll share, so. I'll, I'll, I'll share. So he, he actually, he was representative for our neighboring district that included Dover Foscov, uh, several years ago. Um, and he is now running for the state senate, um, position that Senator Garrett currently holds. Um, and when they re-did the redix, redistrict thing, um, um. She currently lives in Penobscot County, but she covers all of Piscatawres. And I believe it's eleven towns in northern Penobscot, something like that. Um, so he is, is running for that. And he called me, uh, Friday, um, and to ask like. About why we've been in the news lately. So I kinda filled him in and.
Nosy.
And I took the opportunity to advocate for our fire department with him and explain, you know, that, um. You know, but fiscally, it's, the budget is, is tight because we have more medical calls and. Being a doctor, um, you know, he, he understood that the whole thing with Mayo Emergency Service is, um. Declining and that we have to pick up more calls. So that's what I shared with him. And, um, so he offered to come and talk to. A select board and, and I suggested the, the budget committee cause we just got done with our, our budget. Um, and they all know, those members really know what our challenges are in order to communicate to him what. We're faced with. So, um, we have a tentative meeting, actually.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third with him.
Four? I think it was four.
Two, one was going to call them, one was going somewhere to transport. They ended up calling Harmony, over to Harmony who was saying he was completed. Any air one. It was just crazy yesterday. Hear the radio. And it was mostly medical stuff, but. It just, they didn't have the, the in ones.
Well, and the, the, the reason I brought that up is because I think, you know, that's. Part of our responsibility. Every opportunity is to, to meet with those people that may be elected, maybe not, but, but the more. That we can kinda plan that.
More they know about us.
Yeah, we are. In a very difficult situation, um, that I'm not sure that we have the financial ability to, to, to cover the costs. But we can't be without. A department. And it's gonna get more important as we, as we know, as hospitals have closed and as, as. Hospitals have had a harder time hiring people.
Um, and that's, that's why I'm hoping that we settle work together and we make this work and keep the vibe popping going.
I've spent.
I'll tell you, if, if the door's closed.
I, I don't think that's not.
Town. I, I know, but if it ever happened, the town's gonna be in a burden. Because our budgets are way that across comes other departments committed to cover.
Right.
Unbelievable. And a pitch out of that mutual aid agreement. And that's what stings.
Right. And I, I, and I just don't, I, I think that it's an important part of Monson's id- identity, I think. And, and to lose that, it would just be another nail. Like, and, and we can't be without it, with our.
I can bet you, ask Dr. Knight, I ain't gonna let that happen.
But we're committed to that as well. But we just have to be creative.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we definitely should pursue Senator Collins though. Absolutely.
And it may not happen overnight. It may not happen once, but she'll take a good look at it. At least we'll be on her list on the map saying what they do in the situation. So that's. That's where she went. And last year, five new departments she brought. And small towns like this, and stations were a micro.
So Glenn. I, I, I don't know if you would be comfortable. Please to.
Yeah.
Contact her.
I think, I think the more.
All of us, right?
The merrier.
Yeah.
I think the more she hears it, but I think having a, like.
Right.
Hounds people as well as bar, fire department select board, town manager, clerk. Everyone, I think.
What would be the best way in terms of reaching out to her? By letter or phone call? By letter?
Yeah. Assistant used to be, I think she just retired, but. Uh, Bill Holmblum's daughter.
Oh.
Ann Holmblum's daughter, you know, to lift up across from you.
Right.
And, but I think that's Sarah. But I think she's retired now, but.
She might still have a, an hand.
Yeah, yeah. I can contact Sarah and find out. Best way to.
Okay.
For Jim.
Okay.
Do that.
Thank you so much. Alright, um, I'm sorry, we are having a long meeting here. Um, so there, the next item is this new state law regarding tax-acquired properties. And. Um, I learned about this through, uh, an article in the Observer, um. Uh, involving Dexter. And then I saw MMA had a, um, sample, um. Uh, advisement on this as well.
Yeah.
So that, do you know any more about it?
No, not other than, so when it, when you put it on the agenda, I went and read them so that I would at least be informed. But other than that, I don't have anything else. I know that we do have a couple of tax-acquired properties that we should like do something with. Um, in the coming time, but I haven't had time. I know that I prepared you guys as a board when I was town manager before. With what we have for town properties and what we should do. And then we didn't really move forward with that. But there is still a handful of properties that we should, in the future. Do. Do something. And so I feel like once we get into the thick of that is really where this is gonna be. Applied to us the most, but definitely things like. The Teddy Hill Dangerous Building, any, anything that we do to that, we need to document and make sure that we, all costs are documented. So that when it does come time to sell that property, that we could get back all of the expenses. And because the new law, you can't make a profit off a tax-acquired property. You have to give all access funds back to the former owner.
And we have to make an effort to find.
The former owner, yes. And that's gonna be a little bit difficult with some of our properties because we've had them for so long.
So I believe it, i- i- am I right? Uh, it's been a while since I looked at this, that we have to have an ordinance about this?
No, if we have an ordinance that specifically ties to tax-acquired properties, you may need to, or charter or something like that. That you might need to change your ordinance or charter to match what the state requirements say, but we don't have anything like that.
Perfect. Yeah.
You, so. So I guess, yeah.
So the town doesn't have to even deal with it. You just sell property with the obligation to the building?
Yeah, I guess so.
It was second was one of them.
Yep.
And that was just inflation of those properties. Tax acquired, up for bid, the bidder must hit on the building within thirty days of.
See, that's very strange. Cause when I was on the board at Bradville, we had to tear down a building because they said that we couldn't sell a dangerous building. So str- but. That's definitely something to, to make sure that we're actually doing what we're supposed to be doing before we move forward with that.
Definitely will, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we talked about updating personnel policy and, um, it's gonna take some of our time and. Um, to look at that and. I don't know how that was done in the past.
Personnel policy?
Yeah.
Um, basically it was just discussed what, um. What changes they wanted to make. Um, and then the town manager just made the changes and then it was reviewed at, um. So much for a meeting. And if it was good, then it was signed off on and a done deal or go back and, well, let's change this. I know that, um, Bill had noticed a couple of things that just didn't make sense. Like, for example, um, I guess in one section it says that the town will match. Three point something percent of the, the main pairs, but that's really not true. You match what they tell you. You're gonna match and it's more like eight something. So, you know, just things like that, that, that just need to be updated.
Okay. So maybe, um.
And then anything that you wanted just to have different.
Yeah. I think knowing that, you know, if we could just, um, start making a list of the things that we're.
Yep.
And then come together with that and.
Yeah, I'll try to make it a point to just actually read through the whole thing because he mentioned a few things, but that's the one that I'm, I specifically wasn't talking about. Supposedly there were a few things that just didn't jive with what it says over here.
Right.
And, you know.
And then the whole health insurance piece.
Right.
Okay, so we can, I guess, start, um. Could you email us a digital copy of?
Yes, there's a copy in your binders too.
Okay, excellent.
But yes, I can, I'll email you, uh.
I'm good with what's in the binder.
Yeah, the binder.
Okay.
Don't worry.
I can read that.
Yeah, unless.
Well, I'm a paper kinda person, so I, I like that. And I have to like mark it up and. Have my agenda in front of me.
Okay, so we will work on that. Come back together in the next meeting. Ideas. And then I wonder that you already have, um, you said, uh, job descriptions. I'm sorry, hold on. Job descriptions for all town employees.
Yes, so I have draft job descriptions because you guys have to accept them, I guess. Um, and I did have them ready for you until today. Otherwise I would have sent them to you ahead of time, but they're in your binders. That's weird that we don't have one after town meeting.
I mean. We could have a short one.
We used to have meetings twice a month, the second and Thursday. So there's always that possibility, you know, we can have a special meeting on that. Um, last Thursday.
We may need to. There's a, there's a number of.
It's a lot of work. Yeah. I think that was the thought, um, Senator New York on, I think it was when we started that.
We didn't have a lot going on.
Yeah.
But there's a lot going on now.
Or at least have special meetings when we need them.
Yeah. Which we've been doing pretty religiously.
It's just if you do go back to twice a month, we just have to update it. Alright, uh, Ms. Manias, anything asked?
Oh, I do have something. The contract with Shirley.
Oh.
Um, it's just for one year and they haven't signed it or anything, uh, but it is for the sixteen thousand, um, instead of the eighteen. Uh, so if you guys wanted to vote to sign it, and then I guess it's up to them if they, the ball's in their court after that.
Have we heard from one of them?
No.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion?
Um, I believe we do.
Make a motion to accept?
Or.
To sign?
To sign, yeah.
To sign the contract. Shirley for one year.
Yep.
At sixteen thousand.
Yep.
The fire needs.
Her fire needs.
I'm sent on a favor. I'm sorry, we're still discussing.
That table stuck to all my papers over here. I know. I've been peeling it off myself and my paper. And I just have a cemetery deed that just needs to be signed.
It's up to you.
Thank you. I'll take the minutes and I'll take the deed. You have the side minutes? Do I have the side minutes? No.
Anything else? You know, come.
Just to note that, uh, town website probably needs some updating. Big selectmen's positions, town, you know, things like that.
Committee memberships.
Yeah.
It's not up to date.
It's not up to date right now. Okay, I'll mention that today. I usually choose right on that, but. We'll mention it.
Lot of changes.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Discussion, all in favor? Here, Jerry, at.
Eight oh nine.
Thank you, everyone.
Next week one night.
Yep, yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with Jeremy and see what night he's available next week and then I'll. Okay, okay.